Call to order, Town of North Branford, special town council meeting Tuesday, July 18th at 2:00 23 PM. We'll start with the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here this evening. Okay. Let's start with roll call, please.
Counselor Meese.
Here.
Counselor Eagleson.
Here.
Counselor Gold.
Here.
Counselor Palladino.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Dintz.
Here.
Counselor Fugio.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
And Mayor John.
Present.
Okay. Okay, on to something we're excited about, the community events and presentations section here, where we're going to present to some former retirees here in North Branford. So I'm gonna read a little something we put together here, and then we're gonna present some plaques, and we're gonna do a picture as well. So we have some folks here, and amongst the group here, we wanted to make sure that, you know, there's some folks that were part of our organization, or our town for a long time, the fabric, the build of our town. And over time, they possibly have left, and it was kind of a busy time period, so we wanted to make sure that we're always recognizing those that are bringing a great deal of their energy and their life into the town and giving back to the town. So we're gonna talk about some folks that are here today. We'll start talking about Helen Glasson, Atwater librarian. Her service was February 1st, 1988, February 2nd, 2018, 30 years at North Branford, which is quite commendable. Thank you, Helen. Diane Ramsey, who unfortunately is not with us this evening, dispatcher, October 20th, 1992 to February 2nd, 2020, 22, oh, sorry, 2020, 28 years. Matt Caddelli, chief of police, September 30th, 1970, to June 30th, 2018, 48 years. Thank you, Matt. And Michelle Knockwood, purchasing agent, March 20th, 2006 to April 5th, 2022, 16 years at Town of North Branford. The first four, we have plaques for today due to the fact that they're gonna be able to make this meeting. So I will read through the other folks, though, probably appropriate to do so now, and then we'll do a little show of each of those plaques. So Debbie, is it?
Will be on the minutes.
Varelo. Edward Smith, librarian, August 29th, 1988, December 3rd, 2022, 34 years. Thank you, Debbie. Ron Ferrucci, police officer, August 13th, 2001, December 16th, 2021, 20 years. Thank you, Ron. Kurt Weiss, town engineer, May 6th, 1987 to June 30th, 2021, 34 years. Thank you, Kurt, for all that you've provided to this town. Bob Hall, library director, September 1st, 1976, December 1st, 2017, 41 years. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Bob Grimm, Public Works, November 28th, 1988 to June 4th, 2019, 31 years. And Barbara Ferrucci, tax collector, September 7th, 1990 to April 5th, 2019, 29 years. Cort Sperry, police lieutenant, July 5th, 1994 to June 27th, 2020, 26 years. And Dameal June, police officer, July 28th, 1985 to October 3rd, 2020, in the 25 years. So there's a lot of really great tenure, and I think the council would like to extend our absolute appreciation for the amount of effort that you've brought to this town. Obviously, this is your career, but being part of this fabric of this community, living within this community, takes a lot to stay within a career that long, to stay within a town for that long. So it's truly commendable, and we appreciate all the efforts that you've put into this town. So that said, I'd like to ask, should we do the three together, and then we'll do some individual pictures?
Yeah, why don't we do them individually, and then we can do a group photo with them after.
All right, let's start with Ms. Helen Glasson, please. Okay. Ms. Glasson's over here. How are you? Does the council want to come up and get the picture, please?
Why don't we get the whole council in front?
Centered on the, on the amplitude.
Right, centered by the logo. Seal, I should say.
Seal, yeah.
I love the seal.
And just stay.
Right behind it. You could do that. Yeah.
Tell him that.
Let's go side with her. All right, one, two, three. Oh, Miss Rose, I'm just popping part of your head.
What do you want me to go over here?
Let's see. That's better. Advanced camera sets we have here in North Branford. Yeah. Okay, that's better. Ready on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. All right. Ms. Matt Caddelli, sir. How are you? Seal. Come over here for a picture, Ms. Fox. Okay. Marie, slide that way, scooch that, nope, there, perfect. Ready on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. All right, Ms. Knockwood, please. How are you? Good to see you.
Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you very much.
All right. Perfect. Nick, scooch that way, yeah, perfect. Ready, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you also very much. We appreciate you folks coming out tonight. Again, thank you for your service to Town of North Branford. Okay, so we're going to move on into our next part of our meeting here, which is the minutes of previous meeting, which is June 20th, 2023, town council meeting. I will accept a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved with the following corrections. There's a number of them. So the first one is under section 4E, committee reports, planning and zoning. It's 4E, planning and zoning committee. It says Counselor Angeloni, but I'm not on planning and zoning. I think it was Deputy Mayor Zampiano. That should be indicated. There was no meeting. Then number F, finance committee. I'm not sure what the first sentence means because it says that there's language to be changed regarding the safety commission for finance, and I have no idea what the safety commission is. I don't know that I said that. So I'm not exactly sure what that should read.
It should probably be the public safety committee.
Down to G, which would be U.
Right. That's right.
Yeah. So I'm not exactly sure with that. You might have to go back to the tape. Then under 8A, it's just, the motion is mentioned for discussion, creation of an 1831 committee. It's just listed twice there. Everything is listed twice as to... Well, actually, the motion that's listed there is not part of the discussion of the creation of the 1831. It was a motion to amend the agenda. So the first section should just be eliminated because then the motion is stated correctly underneath that. And then 8... Now I think it's just wait one second. 9B, on page 6 of the minutes. It says Mayor McMillus, and that should be Mayor McMillan.
Thank you.
And then under 8C, on page 7, at the top of the page, it says their designer, and it should be designee. And that's all the corrections that I have.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion with the amendments from council. Do we have a second from council?
Second.
From Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Any discussion?
I'm giving up. I can't, I can't move it.
Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. We'll move on. And if you need to have anything backfired, we can get it after as well. So there's a number of changes, or I understand that. Okay. On to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item 4, correspondence, citizen statements, petitions. Do we have any? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 5, unfinished business. Item A, discussion in action. 224 Foxen Road, map 22, lot 1, request to connect mobile homes and recreational vehicle park sites and lawn facilities to sanitary sewers in Totucket Road.
Mr. Mayor, we're just bringing up Victor Benny, our town engineer, who's remote.
Understood.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here. I apologize for not being able to attend tonight, but I guess tonight's just an update. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thank you, Victor.
Great, great. So if I could, I'll just update everybody. At the last meeting on June 6th, we did have some questions from the WPCA and requesting more information pertaining to available capacity in the system and regarding how much flow we actually send to Greater New Haven WPCA already. I corresponded with Greater New Haven WPCA and verified that there is capacity built into the system with the calculations that we provided them and a little bit of a revision to the calculations that we provided. There's plenty of capacity available in the system. And one of the other questions was regarding how a special connection fee might be handled, whether it be from a lump sum to partials to a per-unit basis. I think based on the fact that we have differing types of connections at any one point in time, being, you know, it could be two RB units and one mobile home unit, or, you know, one unit at a time. I think it's best to go forward with a special connection fee on a per-unit basis based on, you know, the number of units they're proposing to connect at that time. But I certainly would leave that up to your discretion on that decision. And I think that was about it unless there's any further questions or thoughts that might have come up from any members of the WPCA. I believe we should have Don Caddelli, the property owner, be there tonight and in attendance, and Jim Freddy from personal engineering.
Jim's not here, but Don is present.
Let me turn down. I'm good.
All right. So is there any discussion from the board as to your thoughts on this as presented?
So I just have a question for Don. I wasn't at the June 6th, but I read all the minutes and everything. So you would, you didn't want to pay the whole thing upfront. This is a phase in over a number of years, correct?
Probably a five-year phase in.
So...
We would like to pay the fees at type of permit issuance.
Which is what the town engineer is recommending also. So, okay.
And then, okay, any other questions?
So I would like to move the suggested motion that is in our packet. I'm not gonna read the whole thing because it's a whole page, but I'm just gonna move the motion as stated.
Okay. Motion moved and stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Passes. Thank you very much, Victor. Thanks for being on today. I know you're kind of stuck, so we appreciate you coming on the, getting on the horn with us here.
I look forward to seeing you all next month.
Likewise. Thank you. Thanks, Victor. Ms. Caddelli, thank you as well for being here to appreciate for answering questions. Okay. Okay. All right. Item, item 6, new business. There's none. We move on to the regular town council meeting. Reports and committees, boards and commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission?
It was only able to attend, but they did have a meeting on the 10th. I didn't get the minutes yet, so I could present those at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Item B, Parks and Recreation?
Park and Recreation will be meeting next week. And the big thing with, right now, is everyone knows the Poco Fest is in
False wing.
Two and a half weeks. So we are in the final stages of having it all come together and finalizing things. And of course, it wouldn't be a meeting if I did not ask for volunteers.
Just forms.
So we, you can go to the website. There is a form there for volunteers. I've already had two council members contact me and ask if they would like to, when they need, when we need help, and where they could. So I have two volunteers already, so I thank you very much for that. Anyone else who would like to, I am open and would gladly take the help. So we are still looking for volunteers. This year, it's a three-day event, not a four-day like last year. And we have a lot of new and exciting things happening this year. So we hope that the weather is not as hot as last year, and we hope that all of this rain we've been getting right now is done with, and we can just move forward.
Do you want to give a couple highlights of some of the new things, seeing that we're not gonna be in meeting until after?
Well, actually, our next meeting is just before the Poco Fest. But we do, we do have, so new this year is the Beer and Wine Garden. It's actually, it's not a tasting, it's an actual beer and wine garden, which will be set up next to the stage. We've moved the stage up to the top field. So it'll be next to the potato and corn booth, and the stage is there, and the Beer and Wine Garden will be next to that. We also have axe throwing, which is a gentleman from town who runs this operation, and we have axe throwing. And we will have helicopter rides this year also. So they are in the youth football field. That will all be roped off. It actually will take you up. You'll go over Lake Galar, Totucket Mountain, go over the Auger property. You will go to downtown New Haven, over the Thimble Islands, and come back.
Town, I think our town attorney is interested in that. Get him on the helicopter. I could see his excitement in his eyes.
The helicopter rides will only be during the daytime hours on Saturday and Sunday.
I was hoping for the hatchet catching.
The hatchet, oh, you're hatchet catching, okay.
He's at that, too, committing how the helicopter ride goes.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Are these those helicopters that they fold up and put on the back of the truck?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And they will...
Yeah, I did it at the big eve. They actually fold them up, fold down the blades and everything else, and then put them on the back of a truck like a amusement ride and take them along.
I like the little helicopters that go in a circle and you control the up-down. Yeah, yeah. That's more my style.
So they will, they will not be refueling here on site. They will be going to Tweed to refuel.
Oh, good. No jet fueling, and that's good to know.
I'm not sure.
Are they two-seaters?
Yeah, yeah, there was room, two-seaters.
Okay.
Pilot and then the two people sitting.
Nice. We do have an experienced aviator in the house today. I would wonder if he would be, if he would be someone that would get in one of those helicopters. Mr. Hall, would you, would you get in one of those helicopters?
Probably would.
Okay, I know you would. Okay.
Just for clarification, the hatchet throwing is not associated with the helicopters, right?
No.
No, it's associated with the beer and wine.
Bro, yeah.
I want to know if I gotta get an extra ambulance.
Not recommended to throw them from the helicopter. The town attorney told us not. We were gonna try to do that, but...
And we also are having, we've expanded our kids section, and we also have pig racing this year. So wee-wee-wee pigs will be there all weekend long, running several shows. And so we are looking forward to that. We have been told that they're pigs, they're piglets, actually.
Piglets.
And they're very clean. They get baths during the day, throughout the day.
Not breaking any labor laws, being, they're piglets, right?
Nope. And, you know, if they race, they race. They're not trained for racing, you know, it's not, no violations with PETA, and she does not kill any of them later on for food.
Will you be running a sports book on this at all, or? Okay, so, so no baking kebabs? Okay, good.
This year.
All right. All right, well, that's good. Thank you for surprising us to these new things we have going on. It's gonna be another great year, and let's hope the weather holds out if we don't get these...
And a lot of great bands. We have Hazard County is Friday night. Juice Box is Saturday night. Those are the two primetime bands. And then we have opening acts for them prior to that. So we have different genres of music, so I think it should be...
And not to forget, the most extravagant fireworks show in all of Connecticut.
On Saturday night, 9:30.
There it is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind me asking, Rose got asked a question. Has the, our lawyer looked over the insurance policy of the helicopter company thoroughly?
They, they will be. He does his inspect, he has to go for his FAA inspection, like just prior, like at the end of this month. So his insurance does not get renewed until he passes that inspection. So we will get his updated insurance policy at that time. But all of the insurance requirements for all of our vendors have been going through our purchasing person, Mike Fumiati, and they're are very specific. And it's more than the regular vendors also.
Is this his first go at?
No.
No.
He does, he, I think it's, I think it's the Berlin Fair. I think he does the Berlin Fair.
Okay.
And so...
The only way to really look this over is put town attorney and Michael Fumiati in the helicopter together. I'd say that's the right way to do it.
As long as it doesn't go up in the air, I'm good with that.
Oh, no, no, we're going.
How much is the ride?
It's $40.
That's not bad.
Per person, and the festival gets $5.
That's great.
So there's certain things that we've brought in this year that don't cost us anything. We actually are, we get proceeds from it based on the number of people that participate.
I listened to this years ago at the big eve when I did it. It was a glass helicopter with no doors. So I don't know if these are the same thing, if they've updated them over the past 30 years or not.
There's some pictures on my line.
So...
I hate ladders.
Take a ride in a fishbowl.
Due to construction issues, we've had to change the layout a little bit. So this year, just to put it out there, so the shuttle bus service is actually going to be dropping off and picking up over at the Auger House. And so we're gonna have actually two entrances to the festival. One over in that section, coming in from that side, and then the people that park on site will come in the other way.
By the field.
By the field.
Gotcha.
Coming in through there. The car show has been moved from Friday night to Sunday morning.
Sunday morning, okay.
Will be the car show and the Floyd's 5K race, which is normally on Sunday. That has been moved to Saturday morning. And so we highly encourage people to use the shuttle buses. We have lost a number of spaces just due to construction and dirt piles and everything else. So, and the road by Public Works, the new road, will not be open at all for any, for anyone.
For foot traffic? Will it open for foot traffic?
Yes. We will only use it if we use the softball field for parking. But otherwise, so we've had to make a lot of changes due to all of the construction that's going on. But we're just rolling with it.
Very good. Exciting times in North Branford. Okay. Thank you very much for that, that update. Appreciate it. All right, on to police commission. Can you, can you top that?
No meeting.
No meeting, okay. We'll let you go on that one.
I have a lot to say about communications, though.
Okay, good. All right. All right. It's on to Ron, fire commission, sir.
Same thing, no meetings.
Okay. All right, on to planning and zoning commission. Deputy Mayor. Planning and zoning met Thursday. There's a new vet opening up in North Branford on 139 where the Marcus Law Farm was. It used to be the old church rectory years ago, St. Augustine's Rectory, in that, in that building. And Tilcon renewed their special permit to store soil from their blasting areas. They do it somewhere behind, behind Grant Drive, like, but in the wood, you can't see it. I hear it. I lived near it. But it's, it's, it's not, it's not an industrial or commercial zone, so they have to keep renewing their, their special permits. They move it at night, hear the people. And then they cleaned up their bylaws. It looked like just nothing, nothing particular. It just looked like misspellings a lot of things and, you know. And then, then they also talked a lot about multifamily housing district. And they're putting, they put together a draft that they're working on. Good. Worth a present. Great. Okay, on to the, thank you, on to the finance subcommittee, item F?
Finance subcommittee, we had a special meeting last week, and it's later on our agenda. It's in regards, we'll be discussing it because it deals with security issues for the new police station, but it has to do with a no-bid consideration for one of the vendors.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to G, Public Safety Communications Subcommittee?
Okay, the committee met on June 28th. Ray Vergotti, who represents Homeland Security, has informed the committee that there's still an issue obtaining the subordination agreement with M&amp;T Bank, and he's still working with, is that correct, attorney?
That's my understanding. We've heard that.
Okay, so that's still a problem.
The boss's been in their court for some time now.
He also informed the committee there's an issue in obtaining, now, don't ask me a lot of questions about this. He can't, he right now can't get what's called an 800 amp circuit breaker, which is needed for the tower until the middle of September. In the meantime, he's thinking about putting in a 400, maybe a 400, two 400 temporarily. There was a lot of discussion at the committee about whether they want to do that, so I'm not sure what the update is on that.
And this is for the Tilcon Tower or the US?
This is Homeland, the one over here.
Over here, Tilcon. Okay.
No, not Tilcon.
Oh, no.
The one here. One in Northford.
Northford Center, not the Tilcon.
He's going over there, live directly at the top of the tower. Yeah, okay, so the Northford, the Northford Village Tower.
So again, that's an issue, this problem with this amp that he can't get until the 26th of September. He's thinking of putting in a 400 one temporarily, at no cost to us. He also needs information, additional information from the town in order to get a notice to proceed. I don't know how much he's received, a certificate of insurance, an antenna mount analysis, and a commercial lease agreement. I don't know if he's received any of those from the town. Paul Zito, who is our consultant, has been working with the town. In terms of the Tilcon Tower, that's the one over there, they're waiting for a notice to proceed and a certificate of insurance from the town. And they, however, have agreed to dig the trenches for the electrical service to the North Branford radio cabinet. And Motorola is going to be installing in the fire department apparatus all of the car radios by the end of September.
Good.
So that's not too bad, right?
No, that's good. Thank you. I know you said not to ask questions, but if we don't put in the double 400 amperage...
I would have to defer to...
Would it, would it not work?
Deputy Chief.
He needed 800 amp service there, so can you put two more in the meantime, or are you waiting around?
Or it's off-service? It's out of service, okay. Okay. And that would delay, if you don't know this, don't worry, but that would delay other carriers to join that?
Nobody's going on it, so they need the 800 to run anything on that tower.
Okay, but they could go on it technically if we would... Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Okay.
How about the certificates of insurance?
Those have to come from the town.
Those are the town's insurance?
Right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
That's usually just a phone call.
Mike, can you take a look at that and see?
They've, they're saying that they've requested a number of things from us, but we have not received requests for those things.
Okay.
So...
All right, well, we'll have to look into that. If it hasn't been received by the town hall, it's hard for us to get it to them.
Supposedly Paul Zito, I don't know who he's, who he's talking with.
Ray said that his company, that Homeland, submitted requests for a number of items, and they have not been received by our building department.
So, so who?
And I asked, I asked... And I asked, I, I asked him and I got no answer back as to where those...
Requested.
Were, were made, to whom, when, dates. I got nothing, sorry.
So who chairs that committee?
Was my assessment?
No, who chairs, who chairs that committee?
The communications.
Communications.
What about her?
Who's the chairman?
The chair, Dave.
Dave, okay. Could we reach out to Dave and see if Dave can make a phone call to Ray or, and/or Mr. Zito? And see if we can coordinate that to get it going.
So he hasn't been in touch, is what you're saying, Paul Zito?
Not, not in a couple of weeks.
You would think.
Well, that's a minute, Mike. So wouldn't someone from the town hall, I don't know whether it would be you or the building department or the engineer, follow up and find out?
The ball, the ball's in their court, they need to resolve their issues.
Okay.
And a lot of what we need to do is predicated on them accomplishing what they need to do first.
Okay.
So even if they had submitted some other requests for what they're looking for, we can't do it until they're done.
Which is why I figured the, the chairman may be viable person to coordinate between those two entities.
Well, I also think Chief Halloran's had a lot of discussion with Paul Zito, he also should be able to help.
Okay.
There's a meeting Thursday on the, the chief bringing up a call here.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Deputy Chief. Okay, uh, any other questions about that? Okay, all right, we're gonna move on, thank you very much, on to the CIWWA.
Okay, the inland wetlands met on Jan, June twenty-eighth. They approved the application for construction on Forest Road of a freestanding garage slash storage building with office and a new parking area within the two-hundred feet of the Farm River, but they have certain conditions, but they did finally approve that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. All right, on to item A, town manager report, A, general updates, my call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. Um, we just talked about the Northford Tower, um, also relative to the Tilcon Towers, since we're talking about the two towers. Um, just a quick update, the, there's delays, as you know, getting off the ground there too. Um, so we've got an agreement going with Goose Town, which is the provider for the public safety radios, to continue, uh, at the same price we've been paying there for, uh, another four months. The town attorney worked out a deal with them, so we can continue until, uh, we've got them squared away. Uh, Poco Festival, I don't wanna dare try to top what, uh, Councilor Angeloni's had there, we've all heard about that, and, um, I know that the, uh, the park and rec, rec team, the Poco coordinators, um, and volunteers have been hard at work putting together a first-rate event, so I know we're all looking for that.
Ask for volunteers.
And if you would like to volunteer, see Councilor Angeloni.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Public Works has commenced with their Phase One paving program, which is a cold-in-place recycling pavement process. De Siro Road, Lower Beach Road, partial Upper Beach Road, uh, partial Seahill Road, and Greystone. Um, Phase Two will be in the coming weeks with a coat of asphalt and curbing, which will be followed up with backfilling curbing, planting grass, and replacing signage as needed. After some rough starts, our munis payroll functionality is up and running, and I wanna publicly acknowledge the work of our finance department in this process. Uh, there have been numerous challenges in getting us up to that point, and it could not have been done without the leadership of Anthony Esposito and his team, particularly Anita Mancini and Terry Nuzzo, who put in a lot of extra hours in effort to make this happen, so our thanks goes to them tonight.
Absolutely.
Uh, on July, July eighth and ninth, the Northford Pickleball Tournament was held at our new pickleball facility at Stanley T. Williams. The event had over two hundred registrants, including nationally-rated competitors.
Oh.
And, uh, the event was held as a fundraiser to support additional amenities at Northford's excellent new facility. Uh, pickleball tournament director Toby Newbig presented a ten-thousand-dollar check from tournament proceeds to Councilor Rose Angeloni and I at a brief ceremony at the start of the event, and, uh, our thanks go to Toby and her organization, and we look forward to working on and improving what we have at that location.
And this tournament was only for doubles, I believe she's running a singles tournament in September, so this, it was...
Get your paddles out, huh?
There was someone from Ontario that came, that competed.
Always back there, every day.
Yeah.
Good night.
Honestly, even in, even in adverse conditions, I drive by there and I see people out there still playing. So it's, uh, it's pretty popular.
Tennis courts are empty, though.
Yeah.
You can see the courts from the helicopter ride.
Yes. You'll know that firsthand, absolutely. Don't worry, Brian, we're gonna get you up there.
So the winner got ten thousand dollars?
No, no, no.
No, we got ten thou, we were the winner, we got ten thousand dollars from them.
We won, yeah.
She donated the money to parks and recs so that they can add some amenities, like benches and places to put your backpacks and paddles and stuff, so, yes. Toby did an excellent job in organizing this.
I was there tonight, and boy, that place is packed.
Yeah, it's a place to be. We need to get some benches over there, bought like some viewing benches.
That's what this money's for.
That sounds great.
Just the, the pickleball, it attracts people from all over Connecticut, not just on the turn.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like to watch pickleball.
No, a, a lot of towns have it, but we have the most, and they're lit, so that's...
We have a ten, ten courts.
Right.
Did they call them courts? I just wanted to show you, terminology, you never know, right? Um, but yeah, that's the most, I think, that any Connecticut community has.
Issue us a pickleball for dummies book, make sure we learn about this.
That's what's gonna put us on the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know?
Maybe it isn't, yeah.
Right. Uh, so, sure, the, uh, the town of North Branford and our Economic Development Commission are partnering with the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce for a Business Under the Big Tent Reimagined event. The Business-to-Business Community Engagement Event will take place Thursday, August third, from five o'clock to seven o'clock PM at Guilford Savings Bank on Middletown Avenue, uh, in Northford. The featured speakers will include, include Rob Hodling, the Deputy Commissioner of Connecticut D E C D, and Charlie Rosa Bianca of Rosa Bianca Vineyards. On Wednesday, July twelfth, from ten to twelve, our staff in the Tax Collector and Tax Assessor's Office paid a visit to Stanley T. Williams to assist seniors in paying their taxes and answer any questions they had, and made the more programs that are available in town for senior residents. The Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee conducted a successful electronics collection on July eighth, collecting a large quantity of unwanted TVs, media devices, monitors, printers, et cetera, at the Public Works Facility on Forest Drive from nine to noon. They also collected mattresses and empty propane tanks for a small size-based fee. Thanks to this committee, its volunteers, and our public, uh, Public Works support team for making the event a success. And there was only one person who drove the wrong way, uh, through their pro, procession, and I don't wanna name who it was, but it was driving a black SUV, and he wears glasses and is sitting in front of you.
Okay.
I want to, uh, also, July fifth, kids attending the North Branford Park and Rec Summer Camp had a special treat when Corporal Pacelli and Corporal Cosenza, with his canine partner Chance, paid a visit. Uh, Chance did demonstrations inside, and the kids were able to view SWAT equipment outside. Uh, and congratulations to town clerk Lisa Valenti on her successful application for a six-thousand-dollar state historical grant from the Connecticut State Library for indexing and scanning land records. Our current online database goes back to September first, nineteen seventy-seven. The goal is to continue adding land records from seventy-seven backwards and complete as many volumes as the two-hundred-and-forty hours from the six-thousand-dollar grant will allow. The project will also be redacting social security numbers from viewable documents online. Um, last but not least, we recently conducted our ratings call with S&amp;P Global, and also conducted our bond sales, and I wanna bring our finance director Anthony Esposito up to give you a quick update on both of those items.
I've got a brief memo for you guys, copy of the S&amp;P rating that Mike just alluded to, and the last two pages are the results of our, uh, bond and note sale.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we are, you know, subject to the, the market and the rates that we got this tour around. Obviously, we're significantly different than, God bless you.
Thank you.
The rates that we got, uh, prior. Uh, but the, the first few pages, again, are the S&amp;P rating, and, uh, they affirmed our rating of double A+, which is a positive, our outlook remains stable, which is also a positive. You recall a few years back, when the state was having financial woes, uh, most of the town had a negative outlook this time of year. So we're happy with that. Uh, talks about some key factors, the, you know, grandest growth, conservative management, steady financial profile, manageable debt. All in all, pretty, pretty favorable, uh, update on the town's finances. And in the last two pages, uh, a little bit of anomaly this year, if you look at the, fact that we have an inverted yield curve, and the twenty-four million, eight-hundred-five thousand dollars of one-year bond anticipation notes, we got a rate, the lowest rate was three-point-five-three and change. You go to the page immediately after that, the twenty-year bonds, the lowest rate was three-point-three-nine. So typically, the short-term rates historically, when the yield curve is functioning normally, the short-term rates are lower than the long-term rates, there's more uncertainty the farther you go out. Uh, in this period, we're in economic times now, we have an inverted yield curve, and so the short-term rates, the one-year rate is actually higher than the twenty-year rate. Uh, this is a function of the market, we obviously have no control over that. Uh, so since we have control over the ratings and such, and, and the financial management, uh, we got a standard card from the Poco Standard Report. Again, this process starts off with the official statement that we go through and update with the help of our financial advisor, talks about the financial strengths and weaknesses of the town. It shows some trending, talks about demographics, talks about the budget, talks about the management, things like that. And then that gets put out to all the, the bidders, and based on what they see, they like or don't like, they submit their bids on the financial strength of the town. So it was favorable. Uh, again, fourteen bids came in for the bonds, which is the greatest number that both our financial advisor and bond council had seen in recent sales, which talks about the desirability of our paper, the town's paper, on the market. And where people that bid on it, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good, good sign. Any questions about the process?
I don't know, it's just good. Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Anthony, thank you for going through that with us. That's good to see, even in, you've had a very interesting time period with inverse yield. Okay, on to, uh, item B, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Uh, for Stanley T. Williams Community Center, the roof has been completed and a walkthrough conducted on July sixth. Punch list items are being reviewed and completed now. Uh, Police Department and EOC, site work is continuing there, the water tank has been installed, and the slab poured, steel is expected the week of July twenty-fourth. North Branford High School, the punch list work is continuing, and the summer punch list items needed to be completed before school opens has been established. Standing portion of the old school has been taken down, and the demolition associated with Phase Two is in process. Uh, and North Branford Intermediate School, the contract was awarded to Barrett Incorporated, as you know. Uh, they are now on-site, exterior is being pressure washed, the MB sign is going to be removed before school starts and stored at the New Haven Sign Store for the future. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, citizen statements and petitions to correspondence, do we have any? Please state your name and address, sir.
Okay.
Good to see you.
I got a big mouth, but I guess I'm supposed to use this. Cliff Potter, Northford, Connecticut. Um, once again, I wanna thank you all. My tax bill was affordable, and I, I can't take any credit, while you can. You guys run a tight ship, you put many volunteer hours that we can't afford if we had to pay you, but you do a good job, so I, I really do appreciate every one of you on the town council.
Thank you.
On that note, you're gonna look at spending money on a dog pound, I believe, or something to that effect tonight. I just so happen to go on The Connecticut Insider. I'm distressed by what I read. Dan Crossgrove Endless Shelter in Branford is overwhelmed with abandoned pets. They've already outgrown the new addition that we've helped pay for, some of it unwillingly, I believe. Why would we get involved with an overactive group that is gonna... Already, their new addition's too small. All those animals are gonna eat, their food bills are gonna go up. I think we gotta go with these staven. They were more stable, they don't go outside, they don't take snakes, they don't take anything exotic. These people will take a worm and put a Band-Aid on it. I think it's time that we look into where are they going, and why have they already outlived their new facility that we helped pay for? I just don't get it, and if anybody wants to read it, it's in black, well, yeah, oh, it's in color. And, uh, I don't understand, are they, are they too over, I don't know what they're doing. That that addition that they had to have and we had to pay for is now overwhelmed with abandoned pets. Abandoned pets, more expense. I just don't like what I see. And they never listen to us when we screamed and yelled, "We, you want money from us, but we have no representation." Then when we went to look at somebody that will really work with us, then they wanted to take us back. And I just don't think this is where we wanna go. That's my personal opinion, but I know you guys gotta make a decision. Okay, also, I wanna bring up, um, I wanna read a letter that I submitted to the rec department. Um, back on December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, I'm gonna read this verbatim. "To the rec department manager, it's time for Mr. and Mrs. Potter to step down from all commitments we were involved with at the Potato Fest. We were both part of the beginning events that were held at the ballfield in a tent borrowed from Bishop's many years ago. This is due to scheduling hurdles, issues in our retirement plans, it's our turn now to get part of our summer back. We are both in our seventies, and I'm leaning more towards the high seventies, and we need more of August to ourselves, 'cause our grandchildren is, are off of school. I will still do three tractor pulls, which will lead me into my last statement, Christmas hayrides and town hall decorations. This is not an easy, easy decision I made, but it's a non-reversible right decision." And the reason I'm reading this is 'cause I don't like what I'm reading on Facebook. It makes it sound like I only took a year off. My wife and I stepped down permanently for health reasons, it's just too damn hot for two of us to be out there two, three days in the summer. I'll still do the one-day tractor pulls, we're gonna have one this weekend, and our tractor pulls to take all day long, we get so many tractors. And so not to have one at the Potato Fest was my decision, because I'm loyal to the tractor pullers to come. Our full-size tractors were to emphasize the farming that goes on in town, and that's what our mission still is. We want people to go by and see a farm tractor pulling, and maybe they'll stop at Dean Francisco's or Larry Auger's, something like that. It's to promote the farming in town. So I will still do that, I still love doing the Christmas track, uh, hayrides. I get more out of that than the kids do. I mean, they come off with smiles all, and I, we do two trailers full, and you guys have been there. It's a way to open up the Christmas season, and that's what this town does. We're, we're family here. This town doesn't segment things, we're all in this together. From the dog park to the Potato Fest to the Christmas stuff, it's all town. So, again, if you get a chance, stop out and watch us have our tractor pull this weekend, and that man and his crew make it all work. I don't do anything, I, I write an email and I put a sign up. The town Public Works does a lot to help everything, and people just don't realize how hard these guys work. I don't think to get praise, until your work will function with them, and they're just right there. I mean, I hate to ask for anything, 'cause they're right there, they drop stuff and they help you. So my, my hat's off, 'cause I needed shade, to them, and they're great. So, once again, if you wanna stop by and see a tractor pull, but Rose, thank you for all you do. You, you, I still wanna give you my wallet, I know there's money in here I can't find. And, uh, you know, you guys, really, the tax bills, they could have been a lot worse if we lived in different towns. And I hear people from other towns complaining, and you guys did it good, again and again, so...
Appreciate it.
You know, it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Sir.
Thanks, Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Appreciate your spirited comments, we always enjoy them. Thank you very much.
I tried to behave, I, I was gonna say, with that forty, four-hundred amp, can't you put a couple pennies in there like we used to do at home?
We could, might be able to do that, yeah.
Remember that?
We're gonna put you on the committee, we're gonna, you definitely have to.
But I didn't know, I mean, what budget would you take the pennies out of?
I got a feeling...
That would be more hard to do than get the pennies.
We're not gonna have to consult you on the helicopter, so if that's where you're going about things.
No, they're a fly-by-night organization.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, on to item ten, resignations and appointments. All right, so we have an appointment, Appointment A of Kathleen Daly is our town clerk, expires eleven-fourteen, two thousand twenty-three. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Dip, or by, uh, Councilor Angeloni, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Diamond, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, thank you. Ms. Daly, thank you very much for taking on our, our wacky meetings and, uh, being willing to write all the things we say. We'll try to make it a little easier for you, but likely not. Okay. Item B, Appointment of Elizabeth Sienna to the Pension Committee expires two thousand, or I'm sorry, uh, December first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
motion by Councilor Angeloni, do you have a second?
Second.
The second, but was that Mr. Abelson, Councilor Abelson? Okay.
A vacancy by someone?
No, that Canada was the Board of Ed-
No, that Canada was the Board of Edrup that...
Yeah, couldn't make it.
Couldn't make the meetings, so they just put the alternate as the permanent and then appoint, and then there's gonna be an appointment for another.
Correct. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you. Item C, appointment of Victoria Lanza as the alternate to the Pension Committee expires 12/1/2023.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you. And then item D, appointments to the Blueprint Committee. All right, so we're gonna do, we're gonna appoint the three members from the committees that the committees have already, kind of decided on per se. Let me pull those up. And we'll go, we'll do the... We've had a number of folks on both the Northford and North Branford side that are interested, and we're, we're thankful for that. We appreciate it. We, we certainly want to see people involved and we want to see new people involved, people that haven't, uh, you know, been part of, of committees in the past. So we, we encourage, we're gonna give it another couple of weeks before we, two weeks I should say, before we, um, appoint those, uh, two other spots, Northford spot and North Branford spot. So if there's any more interest in this, please do send your resume as soon as possible and we will get that out to the group and we'll put together that committee meeting. So if I could have a, a motion to approve, can we do that in ones? Do we have to do each one? We can do all together?
Motion to appoint.
Boom, 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 okay. Why don't we do it like that? I have it, let's see. We're just looking at it before. Sorry? Yeah, Steve.
It's from Park and Rec.
Park and Rec is Steve Torino.
Want me to read it?
Uh, yes, please. Would you mind? Ron, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following, uh, people from their respective, um, committees to the Blueprint Committee. From Parks and Recreation, Steve Torino. From Economic Development Commission, Dan Arman. And from Planning and Zoning Commission, Robert Nowak.
Okay, so we have a motion by Counselor Pletchuk. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we're gonna second by, uh, Counselor Palladino. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained. All right, thank you, those folks, uh, for being part of this committee. Well, we're gonna get this wrapped up as quick as possible and hopefully get those meetings started because we'd like to see some, uh, reports back for, by March. So we know we're not giving a whole heck of a lot of time, but we, uh, we're excited to see what this committee produces. Okay. On to item 11, unfinished business discussion action. A, creation of the 1831 Committee. I think we're keeping this on here just so it's relevant. Is there anything that we want to add to this at this point in time? Any further information, Mr. Downs?
I have nothing.
Okay, so I know we have some good information in our packets. We'll keep this on for a little bit. We'll probably start to work building out that committee in the fall. Okay, and then the inter-municipal animal control agreement. So, um, my thoughts here would be that we have a conversation amongst the counselors as to, we've, we've heard both East Haven as well as, uh, the Cosgrove Shelter, as to their services. We have a comparison now that received recently between the two services, uh, financial commitments or expectations, I should say. And we have a couple of questions, I think, some, a couple outstanding questions amongst the differentiation. We can choose to make action tonight should we desire, or we also can choose to give it another couple of weeks to, you know, discuss this now and, and then come into a decision for the first meeting in August. We don't have to be hasty per se, it's, but we also don't want to delay.
Well, I, I personally think we should have some more time. We just got all that information yesterday afternoon about 5 o'clock. Plus, we just got the more information this morning. I would personally would like a little more time and do it the first meeting in August. I haven't really had a chance. I came about 5 o'clock this afternoon.
Yep.
I personally think it's been put off for a long time. We should, we should vote aye. We've had everybody in here. We, people have toured it. I know I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Counselor Mays?
I agree with Ron. I mean, there were site visits. We took advantage of them. So people would go onto both facilities to see the sites. The problem comes down to the price. We know one person's asking for 150-some thousand for the contract and the other, the other party's asking for 135,000. So it's gonna be, you're gonna get what you pay for. You're gonna pay more money for a more updated facility. You're gonna pay less money for a less updated facility. So I agree with Ron. I mean, I don't know what else there is to talk about or to discuss. When I read the comparison chart, it's, that's the comparison chart. It's one page. It took me a matter of maybe six minutes to read the page. So I agree with Ron. I don't see why we can't maybe discuss people's personal likes and dislikes of each facility to see where we want to go before a motion is put, or, uh, Counselor, uh, me to Mr. Mayor, if you want to go with the executive session so we can speak more freely about the facilities. That's up to you, but I agree with Ron.
Is it viable to bring that? I don't think it's viable for executive session, unfortunately. But.
Plus, it's a special meeting, don't forget.
It's a special meeting. We can't add to the agenda, unfortunately.
Okay, but, um, I agree with Ron. I, I think, um, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I don't know what other information I need. I have, I visit the facilities, I see the prices. I see what they have to offer. I compared them. I know where I want to go.
I'll speak to my experience and then I'll let, I think it's viable to let everyone speak to theirs and we can, we can take it from here. We can go in either direction. I did visit both facilities. I went to both East Haven and to Branford. I've been part, kind of working on this process, project for, you know, about two years now. And obviously, um, was not happy with the initial contract or agreement we had in place with Branford, particularly the, uh, desire for us to pay for, um, you know, upgrades and updates, um, and, uh, capital improvements when we are not an owner. And, uh, even more, you know, I wanted to see it as a service, you know, service-based agreement, which has been done. We, we were able to get to there. It wasn't the easiest process to get to there, unfortunately, but we were able to get to that point. I want to reiterate, regardless of what direction we go in, we are saving money. So we're, we're, there's a cost savings on both. Obviously, there's about a $20,000 delta between East Haven and, uh, and the Cosgrove Shelter. I did visit both and I think I was leaning towards East Haven originally due to a number of things. I think they would do a fine job if they were here. However, um, when I did visit the Branford Shelter, the Cosgrove Shelter, I did see that they had a number of other, um, services that were provided to our town. And particularly, uh, it was brought to our attention, although, uh, we're, we're still not sure if necessarily the numbers, you know, are, prove this to be accurate. But there were different type of calls that came into North Bran, from North Branford. In the past, I think one of the areas that was confusing was we were looked at as Branford in whole. So we, when we couldn't necessarily devise what the differentiation from a North Branford call to a Branford call was. And I think that's been fixed. But I, from what I, we've been explained, there's a lot of things that happen in North Branford, particularly livestock, farm animals, um, that need to be tended to, that possibly the East Haven Shelter doesn't have the capability to do. So I felt comfortable when I, when they explained that to me. And then the second part of my decision process was I've been, um, I've been approached by many of our constituents with their desire for us to support the Cosgrove Shelter. So obviously, that weighs heavy on me as well. It is my ultimate vote, one vote here on this, uh, this podium, but it's ultimately being casted for those folks who we represent. And that's how I felt. So that's my piece. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll ride the left. Whoever wants to go next, you can certainly, you know, talk your, your thoughts.
Has everybody, has everyone gone and visited?
My, my, my take on, on this is, um... Anthony, how much did we pay last year?
I, I could check for you.
It should be the 150... 157, 608 annually, which is what they...
They kept it flat.
That's their proposal. We were going to go up to 170.
Right, so, so my take on it is it's flat. There's, if we, if we go at Branford, there's no savings. If we go with East Haven, there is a savings, 135,000 or whatever the difference is. We asked for services, A, B, and C. I believe all, both facilities can take care of our services. Does one have some extra bells and whistles? Yes, yes, they do, but that's not the service we asked for. And so I, I find it, I, I can't justify in my mind to spend more tax dollars when we can get the same, the, the services we required from, from a town that can provide, or a service, or an animal shelter that can provide it to us. So that, that's where I'm at with it.
Then anyone else like to share their thoughts? Oh, sorry, Ms. Pletchuk.
Now, I know that Branford and East Haven set up specified times and bus trips for the town council. I did not attend those, all right? And I'll tell you why I did not attend those. Because I know everyone's gonna be on their best behavior. They're gonna put out the bells and they're gonna do all of this stuff. I went on my own in the middle of the day because I wanted to see them, how they were without being prepared for somebody to show up.
Sneak attack, nice.
I went to Branford. I was really impressed with the facilities. I didn't tell them who I was. I said, "Can I have a look at the facility?" And they were, they were well-staffed. They took me through all of the rooms, uh, through the dog kennels. They did everything. I was really impressed not only with the facility, but with how many people they had working there that day. I left there and I went over to East Haven. The doors were locked. I knocked on the door. I looked in the windows. Nobody was there. This was the middle of the day. I don't know if they were out on the run or whatever they were. So I hung around about 15 minutes or so while the people were cutting, the guys were cutting the grass and stuff. Nobody showed up, so I left. So that was very impressive upon me. And I agree with Tom to disrespect that Branford is a much more highly sophisticated facility than East Haven. But I'm also looking at what Branford has to offer. They have, their officer could, if they have to shoot a deer or whatever it is or take care of an animal, they can do that where East Haven doesn't. And also look at where Branford is located. Right by Route 1, which should right into North Branford, whereas East Haven, you have to come down Hemingway Avenue and come through all the traffic and everything else. So Branford has not only the facility, the staffing, but the location, which are good real estate terms, to, 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 to suit, uh, North Branford. And they hope, they, they, they can help us out. You know, you see Cliff Potter getting up here, talking about a farming community where we have farm animals and all different types of thing. And that's what we are. We are more of a farming community than East Haven is a farming community. And Branford is more like us than East Haven. So, uh, and I know that Branford is a few dollars more, but like anything else, you get what you pay for, you know? Not only the facility, but also they're well-staffed from what I saw. And my, my visits were unexpected. They did not know I was gone, but I did it.
Okay, any other?
I, I found when I, when I talked to people from Branford, they do a lot for our farmers. I don't think people realize how many calls they get out. The goat got away or a bunch of sheep, whatever. We also have a lot of senior citizens that volunteer in Branford. We have a lot of programs for kids in Branford. I, I was very impressed with what they offer for us. You have to look at all the services, not just how many calls I got for cats and dogs. I think we, we should have realized too, when we, one of the, we have one of the first presentations, this room was packed. People do like what happens in Branford. They do get involved in Branford. I personally, when I saw the facility in East Haven, I was worried about their ability, particularly with farm animals. Whereas Branford has set up a little barn, particularly for more farm, so they could help with, with farm animals. Overall, I, I know that there's a difference in cause and I understand and I agree with what Tom's saying, but I think you have to look at all pieces and all aspects of what they can offer.
Tom Pletchuk?
Yeah, so I, um, like some of my colleagues up there, I did tour both facilities. And the facilities, whether they're new or older, doesn't really faze me, but the capacity, uh, is, is something I took into consideration. And I don't know necessarily that East Haven has the capacity to support North Branford. And, uh, like the mayor said, there, there's also the community connection that they've built over the years. If certain animals do get loose, we're talking about farm animals and stuff, they, a lot, they've been servicing the community for so long, they know pretty much where those animals came from. So sometimes those calls don't get logged into the statistics because they know where the animal lives and they'll just pick up the animal and bring them back to Farmer Brown's house and close the gate and, you know, job done. So it doesn't get logged in necessarily as a call unless they take possession of the animal. So, um, I think one thing, I, I think we, I think we probably get adequate service from both, but I think, um, you know, given the history, um, the facility, the capacity, I, I think, uh, you know, I'm definitely leaning towards, towards Branford. And again, all the, all the community involvement and the people that, uh, from our town that are also involved over at Dan Cosgrove, so. You know, but I, I think if, if we did decide to go with Dan Cosgrove again, I think we should sit down with them and we should have clearer expectations as far as reporting, you know? You know, these, these animals that don't necessarily get logged in, maybe there should be a separate log kept just so that we can keep track for our own information as to, you know, yet it didn't get logged in with the state. But, you know, we, we have something to look at and refer to that says that, um, you know, there was an actual call in North Branford. You were in North Branford, you, you dealt with this, so that we can have a little bit more accurate accounting of all the different calls.
So I actually did the same as, uh, Counselor Mays. I didn't go on the bus trip. I actually showed up at both facilities, um, unannounced. Went to East Haven first. They were open. Talked to the, to the girl there. The day I was there, she was actually doing an adoption of a cat. And she let me through the facility. It's an older facility. I asked her a lot of questions if they can take care of farm animals. And she said, "Not a problem." So, you know, they're, I don't think they're equipped to do farm animals, but I believe that they can probably handle the farm animals. It is an older facility. I wasn't overly impressed, but, um, when I went to Branford, I was, did the same thing. I didn't announce who I was. They gave me a complete tour. The day I was there, there was a goat, like, running around the facility. You know, I agree with Ron that, uh, if we do go with Branford, there has to be more accountability. Because that's the reason why we're kind of doing what we're doing. Because I think, um, kind of got out of hand. We weren't kind of watching the store with them. And, uh, shame on us. But, um, Branford's been with us for a very long time.
And there are a lot of people in the town that do a lot of volunteer work with them. Their new facility is awesome. I just don't want to pay for that as far as, I don't think we should, I mean, we pay enough. I just don't think that, you know, I'm afraid that if we do go with them, all of a sudden, you know, it's going to be, they're going to request something from us. Maybe not. I don't know. But, um...
We can review the contract. We can review the agreement.
I, I'm just, you know, I, I just, I saw what can happen in 2024. You know, we can go to almost five and a half percent. So, uh, you know, East Haven's at four percent. But I do, I, I agree with Ron as far as if we do go with Branford, we have to do more accountability.
I think we were, um, you know, as a municipality, you're, we allowed them to be in the position to ask for what they asked for because we signed it. So if we're going to kind of point a finger at the lopsided agreement...
What we should do is like, you know, everyone's saving the peace, you know?
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
All right. So listening to a lot of what...
No, that's fine. You're right.
Everyone else said, um, a couple things. Um, so Deputy Mayor, um, I agree wholeheartedly with it being a service contract, that if we can do something for a little bit less, especially with some of the money that we've been spending in this town on much-needed projects. Not saying that we didn't need a new police station, high school, absolutely. We needed all that. Um, so with that, the Deputy Mayor also asked for numbers from Branford as to these calls for service. Um, Branford provided them for the last six months. And all this talk of, well, we do this and we do that, the numbers don't support it. Now, I understand what Counselor Pollicia is saying with, well, we don't really log this, stuff like that. I have a real problem with that and I have real questions with it. And the reason I do is because I haven't been a police officer for 20 years now. Uh, I work with animal control. I worked within East Hartford and when I worked in East Haven, I did that too. So they get logged, they get dispatched out, at least in East Haven, through police, fire, dispatch. I'm sure it's the same in Branford. Those calls get logged. There's a case number. Doesn't mean they have to log it as we impounded an animal. We do things like that in East Hartford a lot. You don't think farming in East Hartford, but there is a small section that has that. And Farmer Brown's cows get out and we get called there and our ACOs go out there. Guess what? There's a case number behind that. They can show me those numbers. So I don't, I don't buy these numbers that, um, that they're selling us with Branford. Um, I don't like the fact that we, as a town, had issues and there were questions with Branford over the years and they really didn't want to budge and they wanted to say, no, you're going to help pay for this facility. And it wasn't until East Haven came in and said, hey, we're willing to do this and we're willing to do it for less, that Branford wanted to come back to the table. I do like that, okay, maybe East Haven doesn't have the nicest facility, but to correct one thing that you said, Counselor Mays, it's actually East Haven that has the armed animal control officers, not Branford. Um, again, that's neither here nor there. It's just one more service they offer. I know how East Haven operates because I worked alongside them. I know how Owen Little operated. He operated that shelter forever. He is a town resident. He does have ties to this community. He still has ties to that animal shelter so much as that he retired and he's still working there part-time. So not to say that I don't think Branford can do a good job. They have a beautiful facility. I'm sure their animal control officers are capable. They typically all get the same state certification and training. So just because they have a nicer facility, I don't think we should have to spend more money for that, for the same type of service. And, you know, I, I also, I understand that there's ties with this community to, to volunteer there. No one's saying that people can't do that still. So with that, um, my vote would be for East Haven.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak because I just spoke up about wanting to vote, but I did not state my opinion.
Please.
Um, I'm going to duplicate ninety percent of what you just said. And I think that both, um, animal controls can do the same job. Branford, of course, has a bigger, fancier facility now. They put a lot of money into it. Um, but I kind of have a chip on my shoulder towards Branford because of the way that they wanted us to pay for that building. And then when we started looking around, all of a sudden, everything changed. Now we didn't need to pay for the building. Prices started dropping. So basically they were taking advantage of us. And then they came here and said, oh yeah, we did fundraisers. I mean, it's like literally they found the money. But if they could have, they would have kept going. And we're not talking a little bit of money. We're talking they wanted, what, over a million dollars for that building. And, you know, now they're dropping their prices trying to satisfy us. And when the, um, it was, I'm not sure the exact date, but it was probably over a year or two ago when we first started talking about this, when they came in and presented on everything they had done over the year, they actually had a log showing of all their calls. And I questioned the girl that was here. And I, the facts that they gave us, I was so shocked on how low the numbers were on what we were paying. You know, you would think there'd be a lot of pickups, but there really wasn't. The numbers were ridiculously low. I couldn't believe they actually gave us that piece of paper showing how low the numbers were. So I, and at the same time, the volunteers, I noticed a lot of volunteers, a lot of people in town. If we were to go with East Haven, it would actually be a good thing for those volunteers because now they'd have two places to go. Cosgrove is not going to say you can't come volunteer and help our animal control. People can go to the Branford one and now East Haven will be part of our community and people can go to East Haven. And I, I personally believe East Haven needs a shot. They deserve to have a shot at it. And if, if it turns out that we're not happy with it, you could always go back. But that's my opinion.
True. Okay. So I guess I'm the last one. Um, so I, I would have to agree, I, I agree with Walt and with Nick and Deputy Mayor. I really have a problem with what Branford was charging us and the way they were charging us. Because actually in the current budget year, the number that's in our budget is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's what we passed in our budget because we had not decided at that time. That was the new price coming in and we had to go with that because we didn't know where we were going with this. And then all of a sudden, oh, by the way, oh, we'll hold your price to a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And oh, that million dollars that we were asking for our building, you can just forget about that too. And we had been trying to negotiate with them for a couple years in regards to that. And they didn't want to be bothered with it. And then, like it was mentioned before, all of a sudden, now, here. Service-wise, I agree with the Deputy Mayor. We are paying for a service. Yes, you cannot compare the two buildings. Branford spent a lot of money. They fundraised, but they also spent a lot of money to get that facility. And does it give us any difference? What we've asked for, we get the same type of service is what East Haven is predicting on there. They said they would do this. We asked for A, B, and C. They said they could do A, B, and C for us on there. I just don't like the financial end of it from Branford. And I think we were taken advantage of for a number of years from Branford because they figured North Branford's not going anyplace. And I don't think that's right, what they did. And so it's, it, it is, it'll be a drop from what is in our budget, but East Haven is still cheaper for the same types of service. And you have to, in my mind, you have to, you can't look at the facility, um, on there. And I agree, the numbers that we got do not support what they were telling us.
So we can bring this to a vote now? Or we can, I'm, I'm looking for the, your heads if you want to take a moment to think through this or...
I'm so torn.
I'm a little torn myself.
You may bring up good points.
Yeah, there, I mean, honestly, it's, I'm torn myself.
Put it off in a couple of weeks.
No, let's do it.
Let's do it.
Okay. So I'll just make the motion and then we can just take the vote on it.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes Town Manager Michael P. Downs to enter into an agreement for animal control services with the town of East Haven under the terms outlined in their draft agreement.
Second. And if you could please add, in such form as acceptable to the town attorney. In such form as acceptable to the town attorney.
I'm in the motion.
In such form as acceptable to the town attorney.
I second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll do this as a roll call vote?
Discussion, Mr. Chair. Do we have a call for any final discussions?
Yes, of course. Uh, so we have a motion by Counselor Jonesy. We have a second by, I'm sorry.
Counselor.
Counselor Abelson. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll speak against the motion. I still think, and I appreciate what Nick and Tom and, uh, Rosa have said in law. Um, but I, I still feel that although Branford may cost a little bit more money, and I understand some of the issues from years ago, but we weren't, not all of us were here to deal with those issues years ago. We're here now. And we should take into the present, not the past, of what they did. And if the previous town council members allowed them to get away with it, then that's on them, not on us. We're here to deal with the present. And the present is that, I believe, you know, and I'll reiterate just briefly, that Branford is not only the better facility, it's the more well-staffed facility and it's closer proximity. And I would speak against East Haven and I would support that.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair. My discussion point would be that, um, I think they're both fantastic facilities. I don't think we're going to go wrong either way. I do think, though, contrary to your belief, we're going to save money either way. It's less than the, the, Branford's going to be less than the expected cost. And obviously, East Haven's less money beyond that. Um, we got, we entered into an agreement prior and that municipality was holding us to the agreement that we signed on the dotted line for. Um, and with competition, they've made the decision to try to earn our business. And I respect that.
I just have to comment that for years, we, we had been trying to negotiate with them, get them to, to the table. And it was, it was difficult. It, it didn't happen really. So, um, although today's the future, yesterday was the past, the best way to predict, predict the future is, is history. History tells us what the future is.
I will, I will counter that with, they did talk to us. So I, I know because I was at the meeting. It was myself, uh, Town Manager Paulus and Anthony Esposito. And at that time period when we, when we met with, um, Mr. Cosgrove and their finance director, they asked for us, because we, we expressed our opinion that we weren't going to pay for the, um, you know, the increases due to the, uh, capital improvements. Uh, they said, let's get on a holding pattern and see what we can, what we can do to, to get monies in, uh, for donations to, to offset that. So they were honest in that capacity. I have to, that has, it has to be something I couldn't say, but I was at that meeting.
But, but, but it's the same people in Branford were, were, were dealing with. And this goes before, when I first got out on the council, we, we've been dealing with this for quite some time. And it actually went nowhere. Every year went nowhere, nowhere, nowhere. Um, and in fact, if we paid a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars last year, we're going to pay a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars this year. I'm not, that's real dollars. We're not saving anything. That's, that's even. That's flat. You know, it doesn't matter what you put in the budget.
Yeah.
Whereas in East Haven, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to save money. And then if, if, as it goes up after every year or whatever, however the contract reads the increases, it's going to go up from that base, not the higher base. So, um...
Everyone's making good points. It does, it definitely, it, it's not an easy choice. It's true. It's not an easy choice. Uh, there's... All right. Okay. So any other further discussion? Seeing none, put it to vote, please.
Counselor Mays.
I vote no against East Haven.
Counselor Abelson.
Yes.
Counselor, um, Gold.
Yes.
Counselor Pollicia. Counselor Eldino.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
No.
Counselor Pollicia.
No.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Yes.
Mayor McMillan.
No.
Okay. Looks like, uh, East Haven has it. Thank you. All right. Onto the next item. I knew that was going to be a fun one tonight. Okay. Item twelve, new business discussion in action. Item A, communication license agreement with Homeland Towers.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council, this is the, uh, proposed agreement, uh, for us to enter into, uh, a communications license agreement with Homeland Towers. That is the Northford, uh, tower. Uh, this agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, uh, and has been deemed agreeable and, uh, has also been reviewed by our radio consultants as well.
Could I just make one statement about it?
Please.
I know that it is our responsibility for the generator, but Homeland has been telling us all along that we're going to be able to hook onto Verizon Generator when they come in. And I hope that if we sign this contract now, that they don't change their mind. I just want, I just think we should be assured that they're, that Homeland is going to work with us to make sure that we don't have to purchase a generator. That they've been telling us from day one that we were going to be able to hook onto the, um, Verizon Generator. That's my biggest concern when I look at that contract.
Is there a rider that we could, that could be?
It says in there that we're responsible right now.
But does it give an ending?
Um, I don't...
I didn't see it on there, that's why.
I know that we are responsible, but...
So, I got a question. So for every provider that goes on the tower, each provider has to provide their own generator.
I understand that, but we have been told from day one that Verizon was going to let us share their generator. That was part of the agreement.
In writing?
I'm just, I'm just telling you.
Cause every provider that goes on that tower has to provide their own generator.
Bruce, I know that. What I'm telling you is we were told from the beginning that we would be able to go on Gen, um, Verizon's generator. I just want to bring that up.
So we probably want to have that like in writing, right?
I, I would hope.
We, we need to see it. We'd have to have some sort of writing so that they would...
I'm not sure you're going to get that too easily though, because that would need to come from Verizon.
But we can't go by just their word. I mean, it's either yes or no, right?
If you're talking about Verizon, they're not going to give you...
So we got to get our own.
That, that's not true. We have agreements at all the other tower sites to share their generators.
With, really? With Verizon?
So is there a way, Anthony, for them to get it written?
Excuse me?
It's actually common practice for them when they're, with the Verizon responders on the, on the tower to, um, plug it. It's a normal business for them.
So do you guys think that this agreement should read that way then?
Yeah, we, we, if I may add, we, we have received from Verizon, uh, and their council, a generator agreement, uh, generator use agreement, allowing the town to use the Verizon generator at the, uh, uh, North Branford and North Branford Two sites, which we've reviewed and it's acceptable. So it's just not an ad for your approval yet because it only came in the end of last week. Too late to get under your general...
Yeah. So we got it written.
But they are...
There you go.
All right, there it is.
And we're good.
All right. So then we're good to go.
Bring that up.
Good to bring up. Thanks, Brian. Well done. Thank you, Brian, for looking at it. Okay. So what actions?
I still have to ride in the helicopter or no?
No, you, you, so, fuck, you're still on the helicopter. Yeah.
We're going to take you around the town.
Oh, yeah. We're going to show you the town. Yeah, we won't hit the tower. I promise. We might promise. We have it in writing that we won't hit the tower, but...
So, so I don't see any, so do we have to approve this? Is that what?
I didn't see anything in there for language.
Approve, um, authorizing me to sign on behalf of the town.
Okay. So we'll make a motion as such? We'll authorize Town Manager to sign it and...
Let's execute the communications license agreement between the town of North Branford and Homeland Towers.
I'll vote for that. As long as we have it cleared up.
All right. We have a motion by Counselor Diamond. Do we have a second? Second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
Is this holding them up from, um, getting a permit from the town? This license agreement from us?
No. It's not part of the rain delay at all.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Thank you. Okay. Onto item B, set public hearing for Tuesday, August first, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty PM regarding designation, um, designating the town of North Branford as a rehabilitation area for established criteria for the eligibility of real property for assessment, deferral, and administrative procedures.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'll have, uh, this is the town manager Rory Burke come up to address you on this item.
Please. I didn't see him over there. Hey, Rory? I did not see you. Hiding. How do I have the call?
Good evening. Um, so I had sent a memo to the council a few weeks back about the deferral program, uh, which sunsetted in twenty twenty-one. In order to reauthorize it, the state statute requires that a public hearing be held. Um, and as I outlined in the memo, then it must go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an A twenty-four referral before it can come back to the council for action.
Okay.
So this would be the first step.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the town council set a public hearing for Tuesday, August first at seven thirty PM regarding designating the town of North Branford as a rehabilitation area and establishing criteria for the eligibility of real property for assessment, deferral, and administrative procedures.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Counselor Jonesy. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Second by councillor Pallino. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Thank you. Okay, item C, proposed signage for North Branford Police Department Emergency Operations Center project. We have some, we have information in our packet that went through that with us. Did you wanna say something, deputy mayor?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the significance of it.
Well, I think because there's state money that is part of this project, we have to put a sign up because it's, because.
The grant money, maybe?
Yeah, I, I, okay, I understand that, but you know, it's saying thank you taxpayers, but that's only a, a portion of, of the project.
What, what do you mean?
Well, it's the, it's the police department, uh, let me see where, um, North Branford Police Department slash Emergency Operations Center project. So are we just putting a sign up to recognize the emergency part of it, or are we putting a sign up to recognize the whole project?
Um, it's the whole project, cause it's at the top. It says North Branford Police Facility, a new facility for our community.
Correct.
Right, okay, so, so then, is that, is that the appropriate, should there be other people being recognized on the police commission possibly?
I think this is, well, I think this is just the sign that goes out front during the construction phase, correct? That you have, because the state, because there's state money, that's the whole thing. It's, it's like when we built the high school, when we did the roof for Stanley T, we had to put a sign up.
You have to tell some people on that.
Because we have state money.
We're not recognizing anybody, are we?
Yeah, yeah, they are recognizing.
Well, it, the state is requiring this.
Tommy, what pages are those? There's not a page, I have to scroll down.
Thirty-five at the top.
Thank you.
Thirty-five at the top.
Those of you that still have a town.
Those of you who are still lucky to keep the town.
Yeah, we don't have.
I think I'm holding up now.
You might wanna do that, yeah. There's no pages on the, on the, whatever book this is here.
I don't know, may, maybe it's not.
You can't turn it either.
I looked at, and that's, that's always through my mind, like, we're recognizing the, the state, we're saying thank you taxpayer, but recognizing the state.
Right. It's also the, at the bottom for. The committee members and the council members on that. It's, it's typical, it's, would be unusual not to have that as we had in, in the, in the, for the high school, but.
No, this isn't going inside.
No, 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 we're not talking about a block. No, we're talking about the.
The stupid sign that has to, the stage is requiring us.
I couldn't care less, but I'm saying typically you would see that on there, like you did in the high school.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on the high school, you go look, it's there. It's, it's us, it's there. Your name's on it, I'm pretty sure even.
You're talking about the one in the high school?
No, not the block. We're talking about in the, I, I understand, I, I could care less, to be honest with you, but.
Yeah, actually, Bob Big Leone's name was on it.
Bob's on it, yeah, Bob was the mayor in the, during that time period, and, and the council, that council is on there as well. I think that's what your, your.
Well, I, it just, it might, like I say, it might be small, I just noticed, and I said, well, we're, we're saying this, this, and this, but who are we supposed to be recognizing?
It's not a state project, it's a town project with state funds as well, and federal funds.
Right.
The king needs to be recognized.
Yeah.
What's that?
The king needs to be recognized.
Yep. I could care less if I knew you were.
Can we just do a sign without recognizing us?
Yeah, I, I, just no problem.
I just brought it up as, as a point, it does, you know, I'm just saying, it's probably small, I just, it's just note, I just noticed it.
Yeah.
And I thought I'd question it, so.
I mean, when we, when we just did the roof at Stanley T and had to put the sign out for the state, I don't remember seeing the town council's name and all that stuff on there, it was.
I don't know, so either.
Yeah.
I think your name was on it.
Yeah, it said, it said just presented by.
I mean, ordinarily, I mean, if, if I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, so ordinarily, when I see these, when we see these types of construction signs up there, they're usually kind of a bland sign, they're usually a white sign with the blue lettering, it has a state seal on it. This is just a bit of a punched up version of it that kind of enhances it with a, you know, a rendering of the department, and this was actually drafted by representative Candelora's office, so his graphics guy produced this.
Looks good to me.
I have no problem with the way it is.
Yeah.
I can't get, I don't, I don't see it.
I, I make a motion that the proposed sign design as depicted for the North Branford Police Department and EOC project be adopted.
Motion by councillor Angeloni, seconded by councillor Diamond. Yeah, no, it was your right to all, but, all right, we're, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Thank you. Okay. All right, on to item D, request for hazardous waste and recycling committee.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you've got the, the memo packet, and we do have Bill Savistano from the committee here. I just wanted to quickly point your attention to a memo I dropped off in there into your folders today, just clarifying. One of the items, uh, which was the Totucket Times item in the memo that was in your packet, um, I got clarification, they wanted to use NIP funding for a flyer to be inserted in the Totucket Times, I believe that's right, and that's what the intent was for that, which would, would be a completely appropriate use for the NIP fund if you chose.
Of course.
Uh, and then they're also seeking to do mileage reimbursement for the volunteers that do trash collection, uh, and would like to fund it out of the NIP fund as well, and I believe they can do this, but they would need to just have travel expense line created with, uh, the funds allocated from the NIP fund, and the volunteers would need to track and submit their mileage for the requests.
Okay.
If I could, I guess, let's, let's hear from, uh, Bill for the committee, can speak to this.
Bill Savistano, uh, sunny side drive.
Sure.
I entertain any questions, or you have to be, uh, I'll just make a brief statement. Does, uh, does everybody know what the NIP money is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well, briefly, in October, uh, 2021, legislature approved this, uh, monies to be, uh, a nickel to be added to every, uh, charge that the liquor distributors charge the, uh, the, uh, liquor stores. And that money goes back to the state and then eventually comes to the town. Our first year in two installments, we got thirteen, a little over thirteen thousand. You see a figure of twenty-three here. I think if I'm right, like, that's half of the next year's, uh, money coming in, so it seems like they're paying in half your installments. Now, that money could fluctuate every year depending on how the people buy the NIPS. That represents, believe it or not, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand NIPS sold in the town of North Branford. Anyway, and other, if you go, if you look into it, there's, there's, there's a lot of money in the big cities in New Haven and stuff like that. But, uh, so at some point, a few months back, uh, the committee was tasked with, uh, what are we gonna do with this money? So we, we actually sat down, we had as many as twenty-four different things to do, and then we were asked to work them down, and that's the three you see in front of you. Now, I say the, we only got thirteen thousand a year, because the first item there requires about eleven thousand, so that queues up pretty much the, the first year. Although, we're already a year ahead, so we still got, you know, a year or ten thousand. But the idea is to clean up the parks. I did speak with Hank, uh, who's the other person on my committee, uh, that he actually worked with Park and Rec as the ranger a couple of years ago as a part-time thing, and he said basically, Park, for all the parks in town, it took him three two-hour days to do the parks. Now, what we're looking for is not only do the parks here, that would help the public works guys in reference to lawnmowers and stuff like that, so they help with that, but , and the other part is clean up around the town. So the other twelve hours, uh, would be, you know, afforded to around town. This, this could be a good thing, depend, depending on the right person you hire, if that person hustles, it could be a good thing. I think you learn from it, uh, and if you did it for one year, from, from, you know, spring to fall, and then if you keep some notes on it, then, uh, again, you, you could, you wouldn't be signing on for year after year unless you, you wanted to, but you can learn from that.
Okay.
Uh, the second item is, uh, what is that second item?
That's the signs, the A-frame sign.
Oh, the A-frame signs to be used around town. We changed the letters, so everything looks nice and neat. And the third item is?
That's the insert for Totucket Times.
Insert for Totucket Times. That came about because, as you know, uh, the Times is spreading their, uh, delivery, they're even skipping some weeks, so I guess they're hurting for money, so, uh, the, we got a half of one page in there, and most of the time it's always that. Anytime it, uh, it's any different is, is during the voting season where they get some other, uh, letters in there. But, so it doesn't cost us anything, but we felt as though we should subsidize Totucket Times, and at the same time, work up a nice supplement to what our normal is.
That's great.
So that's the reason for, for that.
Well, thank you. Okay. Do we have to have action on this, or is it just more?
It's up to the council.
Informational?
I just have, I just have one question, and it's not that I'm opposed to it, but the whole mileage thing, from what I'm reading in here, it's not clear to me that that's something that fits.
Okay, that, that's directly Hank and myself. There's two of us that take care of that, that, uh, plastic film recycling program you see in town, and basically, we've both been doing it, I came in halfway through the first year, six years ago, and, uh, so, and we also had the school children involved, they used to do Wednesdays. Hank and I would do Mondays and Fridays, they would do Wednesdays. Uh, pandemic messed up something like that, and down to him and I. So Hank actually did a spreadsheet, and like my route from my house to these stops, to back to Public Works, and then the big Y, it's about fifty, and give or take a little more, maybe just seventy miles a week. Now, we had been doing it, getting no reimbursement, because basically, uh, once, uh, we don't have a lot of money in the regular budget, but since the NIP money came along, we thought we'd get reimbursed.
Like I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just wanna make sure we're not doing anything outside of what we should be doing, so.
Meaning?
Maybe.
Brian, are you aware of the NIP money and what it can do?
I'm aware of it, but not to this detail of mileage. I could look into that.
There's a highlighted section in our.
Yeah.
Patent, and it doesn't, it doesn't, it, it doesn't say anything about that.
What it says is the.
That's a summary, is it?
If I could, yeah, it's, it's directly out of summary, so it wouldn't be directly out of the, of the law. I mean, my interpretation of it is because it, I think the nexus can be made, um, that is, that the reimbursement is directly funding the elimination of litter, I think it could be, but of course, I would defer the internal.
Yeah, I would just like to get clarification on that before we went ahead with it, just to make sure we don't shoot ourselves in the foot.
So why don't we push this to the next council meeting? We'll address it then for cert, and we'll finalize it. But just to make sure we can cross our Ts and dot our Is, we'll have our town attorney look at it.
Okay, and lastly, yours, the last paragraph had a reference to mattresses, picking, pickup mattresses, and that came about a couple of years back because, uh, the bulky waste in the fall and in the spring, they all also line up with, uh, e-waste events, fall and spring. That it was on a particular Saturday, the following, when we have our e-waste event, the people are allowed to bring mattresses. Except for the one we had a couple of weeks ago, we were getting three to four dozen mattresses three times a year, except for this past one, we went out to zip, uh, seven, actually. But anyway, the point is, uh, and what we noticed, when the bulky waste was the week after the, uh, the e-waste events, even though we got four mattresses in the, at the event, there were still four dozen laying around town.
Mm-hmm.
The idea was to use the public work employees to gather up those mattresses and bring them to Public Works. Now, they would have to do them at that time. We're not talking about any other time, we're just talking about those two weekends, because we have four dozen in there already, and because we're not allowed to, uh, uh, by permit, we're not allowed to store stuff without state stuff, so. But, so there again, if the public works could do it, that'd be helpful, if, if it's a, a money situation, uh, for the overtime, it wouldn't be overtime, generally, it doesn't have to be done on Saturday, it'd be done during the week.
So that we can talk to Fran if they have, if they have the ability to.
Yeah, so again, that money would.
Okay.
Could be, uh, come out of the NIP money.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you for reprising us. Bruce, did you wanna, I'm sorry, Bruce?
Phil, Phil, I do have one question. The mileage that you drive.
Yeah.
Is that a week, a month? Uh, what is that?
Fifty miles, fifty to seventy a week.
A week, is that, and that's times two, right?
Times, oh, two guys, yeah. He, he, his route is actually a little bit less, but I'd just say.
It's approximately a hundred miles a week.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Bill, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks so much. Okay, we're gonna have, uh, our, our town attorney look at this, and.
I can, it's, the statute says, if you'd like, no, I just found it.
Yeah, if you, if you feel comfortable.
It saves you any time, but, yeah, it says, "All payments received by any municipality pursuant to this section shall be expended by such municipality on environmental measures intended to reduce the generation of solid waste in such municipality, or reduce the impact of litter caused by such solid waste, including, but not limited to, the hiring of a recycling coordinator, the installation of storm drain filters, uh, the purchase of a mechanical sweet, street sweeper, vacuum, or broom." So it does say, including but not limited to, so as long as your expenditure, there's no further guidance, so as long as the expenditure, uh, are, is part of an environmental measure intended to reduce the generation of solid waste, or reduce the impact of litter caused by solid waste, it would be appropriate.
So you would, you would deem it appropriate to do so, as long as we had the proper?
As long as the mileage was for one of those two measures to reduce the solid waste.
Okay. We just have to make sure that we, you know, Bill, you'd have to properly, and the gentleman would have to properly.
Keep a log.
Keep a log for that, yeah. Okay?
Yeah, you'd have to have a log, not just, you know, this, there would have to be a pretty specific log.
Yeah, typically, there's a, a program that you can use online, that would, you, you put in your mileage as you're, you're starting your trip, and then.
Right.
It, it almost like tracks you. Um, I don't know if we wanna get into that, I don't know if it would even cost.
I would think just a, a simple, writing it down.
Writing it down.
Went from here to there.
Yeah.
So many miles, here to there, so many miles.
Yeah, if you, I think that's.
They have document.
Documentation, of course. Proper receipts per se.
Starts off and when he ends.
Yeah.
Not, I don't think he has to put in stops, it's just if he's doing it, you know, starting in Northford, and he ends up in, let's say, goes to North Branford, and then he returns back to the, the, to his recycling center, that's his mileage. So it's, it's the start and the end, it's not in between, you don't have to do anything in between.
Some do.
Couldn't we simplify it, though, if we know his typical.
Yes.
Route, and it's.
Yes, if you have a typical.
Three hundred miles, and it's, you know, comes to this, why don't we just make it where he gets a chunk among.
I would say we could probably do that, right, so we can, instead of making, yeah, why don't we standardize it? Does that, that make sense? Does that, that make sense? Standardize it and say, so Phil, would you come back to us with your monthly, you know, output per se, and then we can standardize with that reimbursement, would it be? That's why here you don't have to.
Make it like that for the year.
Meaning, if you know, if you can come up with your, what your monthly mileage is, and then what that reimbursement should be, and what's the mileage reimbursement rate?
Sixty-five cents a mile.
Is it sixty-five cents a mile?
Sixty-five point five.
Sixty-five point five, thank you. We can do those calcs, and then we can kind of set that stone, this way we can standardize it, versus having it variable, and have something submitted, so that we can, you know, you kind of have no, this is what you're getting back every month, versus.
I do have the spreadsheet, I can give my.
They should submit their routes, too, not just the money.
Yeah.
Is there any toll?
Yeah, we took.
The toll road, yes. Only when you go by the Gremlin, the toll, that looks like the bridge, that's a whole different thing. Okay, does that make sense, or do we, how do you want to go about this, do we?
He does do a mile form.
Yeah.
He does a mile form.
Miles form, okay, that's, it should bring value, thank you.
Can I say something, too?
Yeah, sure.
When I worked here, part of my job was when there was trash issues, going out during the day to investigate the trash issues. So I think if you had a part-time person for, this would cut down on, I don't know if Michael does it now, but it would cut down on the time away from the office, and you would have a certain person that would show what the issues were, things were being put curbside, or there were construction debris and so forth. I would take pictures, so that Gina, Michael's secretary, would have to write a letter to the homeowner and so forth. So if there was somebody that was designated to do this, it would cut away from either staff, Public Works, or, you know, Michael has to go out, or whatever, it was just part of my job that I would leave the office and go investigate trash issues, so I think it's a good idea, you know, council goes with part-time person.
Thank you, Ashawn, I appreciate that.
I got a question, just kind of came up as you were saying that. Now, because Bill is doing that, is there any liability with us if we're paying him for the mileage, and something happens while he's driving around, there's an accident?
Volunteers are not going to be in town policy.
Just want to be sure of that.
That's a good point, should I be calling, I'm sure this company?
All right, so now that it's become a little bit more convoluted, I think we need to, we probably need to adjudicate this further, and figure out what's the right way to go about this, so I'd like to see, Bill, if you presented, provided, you already provided your tables to our town manager, the amount of routes and everything?
I don't think you.
Okay, present those to the town manager, town manager's gonna present it to our town attorney, and then we'll, we're gonna address this in the next meeting, to make sure that we get it done right, because we do have to be aware of, you know, insurance, and, you know, all the different nuances that go about this, to make sure we do it correct. Does that sound suffice to everyone here? Yeah? Okay, all right, thank you very much for presenting that to us, certainly have something else to work on, I appreciate that. Okay, all right, on to item E, award of RFP 923002, ambulance, MBFD, company four.
We're gonna table this at the request, does that need table, please?
Yes, sir, table, thank you. All right, item F, 2023, 2024 lease purchasing agreement, Anthony?
As you know, historically, every year, we enter lease purchase agreements, typically for Board of Ed, technology every year, with four seventy-thousand-dollar annual payments. This year, we're also leasing a Mack truck for the Public Works Department, a three-year lease, we're also issuing for an ambulance at roughly three-hundred-thousand dollars. I put that out on the street to a series of vendors that I use to give me pricing, and you'll see the four results in front of you that came back, ranging from four-point-nine, four-point-six, six-point-eight, seven-point-nine, I'm not sure where that, I was thinking when you put that bit together. So I look at the net overall savings, and you look at the, this is an interesting year, because typically, all three aspects are one by one bidder typically, but in this case, the Public Works and ambulance, the second bidder, municipal leasing consultants actually came in with a better price. However, when you factor in all three components, the Board of Ed technology piece, the TD Equipment Finance nets out, they're about sixteen-hundred dollars cheaper, when you factor all three pieces in. So recommendation of staff is to go with TD Equipment Finance, they will provide the documentation that I will forward over to Brian's office, and again, this is a process that's done annually, just different projects every year, this year, again, we have three, the technology, the public works, and the ambulance.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion, I'm going to move the motion as suggested in the packet, rather than read the whole thing.
Thank you.
Second?
All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond, do we have any discussion?
I just have a question, on the trucks, truck or ambulance or whatever, so at the end of the lease, is it ours?
Yes, this is just strictly a financing vehicle that we use.
Okay.
It's not a lease, like you lease a car, and at the end you have a buyout kind of thing, this is just a straight financing.
Okay.
Financing.
Okay, thank you. So I made the motion, and someone's.
Yep, we have a second by Councilor Diamond, you had your question, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye opposed, stand, thank you. All right, item G, appropriation transfers.
The first pass that year-end transfers, again, there'll obviously be more as we finalize the year-end numbers, the significant ones on the bottom, obviously with the light winter that Fran had, there's some surplus money in his other construction material account, which is where the salt typically would come out of. He's proposing to move some money out to his capital reserve to purchase a cabin chassis, and to start a design process, looking to do an addition eventually onto that building for office space, and this would fund some of the seed money to do the design work. Those are the largest ones, again, on the top page, you see some additional transfers that he's looking to do with that money, again, the real, the light winter really did provide us with some opportunities to do some things. Looking to buy a new DEF tank, a compactor, and an additional mower. The other ones, the town clerk one is very small, a thousand dollars, and social services, again, very, very small. There'll be more on the April, on the August first, and fifteenth agenda for you for year-end transfers.
Thank you.
So I just have a question, as far as the Public Works office study, to put money into an account, to do that when we haven't even, isn't that part of, like, the blueprint committee? Like, why would, why would we put money into an office design if we haven't even decided what we're doing?
Kind of doing with everything.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Kind of makes sense.
Yeah, we could scratch that one.
I mean, it has never been discussed at the council here, so I was just, I didn't know what that was until you just explained it, when I looked at the pack.
Kind of fits with what the blueprint committee's doing.
Right.
Right, I mean, if you want to.
Well, quite honestly, I think.
Put it into an account and have it as a placeholder, but not spend anything, because we don't know where we're going, I mean, that's another aspect that you could do, but.
I think, I think the blueprint committee, I'm thinking more holistically, putting buildings around town, you're not moving the entire Public Works facility somewhere else in town.
No.
So this would be just an addition for office space, it's kind of a different, I see what you're saying, it's been discussed before, but I don't think it's an apples-to-apples discussion.
Well, we do have, we do have the old police department that we haven't decided what we're doing with that yet, which would be the blueprint committee looking at that, and, you know, is that, instead of putting addition on, would that suffice as office space for Public Works? I don't know, I mean, that's.
Sure, solid point.
Or do we demolish it? I mean, there's a lot of discussion there, so I'm not really sure, and because we haven't discussed it at all, I'm not really sure we should be putting thirty-five thousand dollars. Can we just do the whole thing with the?
Yeah, I think we scratched this.
Scratch it.
Scratch the last one, okay, thank you.
Consider it scratched.
Okay.
Sorry, Franny.
Franny laughed, you're over there. She watches it.
He wishes he sneezed.
Yeah. All right, on to item H, approval of tax refunds.
Yeah, we have to.
Oh, we have to make, sorry, yes.
Do I make a motion to approve all of the transfers except for the thirty-five thousand dollars for PD new office design?
Yes, thank you. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor, I'm sorry, Palladino?
Can't get your name out of my mind today.
Sorry, Nick. Second by Councilor Palladino, any discussion?
I'd love to do these.
Seeing none, all in favor? Aye opposed, stand?
She's sending back.
Okay, then now on to item H, approval of tax refunds.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Angeloni, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye opposed, stand, thank you. Okay, on to item thirteen, citizen statements and petitions. We ask, relatively brief, we have an executive session after, but we do appreciate your thoughts.
One quick question, this is kind of open-ended items, maybe for the town manager, inviting Christine Cohen and Anthony Indalora, any thought on that still?
Happy to do if the council would like to.
I would just like, I mean, it's a war zone out there, and I'm not hearing anything from our representatives, what they want to do about it. It's heightened, again, somebody was carjacked, it's, it's, we've lost control of this country, and nobody wants to address it. The party in control does nothing. I'd like to hold their feet to the fire and get her down here. She stopped paper, plastic bags, well, let's stop, put a dent in it, do something, say something, her emails that come out are all fluff and no facts.
Certainly something we can ask. All right.
I just, Mr. Potter, you know, being the business that I'm in, I couldn't agree with you more, I just don't know how it affects town council business, and what, other than to have it just be a gripe session, and, you know what I mean, like, we want to use our time wisely here, so.
I would just like her to make a statement, what does her party plan to do? They are the ones that changed the laws to cause this. And, yeah, I mean, you can't, I email her, she ignores emails, maybe you guys, with a little more push, could get an answer out of her, and if you can't, I apologize.
I don't think you're gonna get the answer you're looking for.
I don't think so either, but I mean, she's got to be made aware, unless it's an election year, then she'll be here.
And that's sad.
Another open-ended item was proper training for commission members?
Yeah, actually, so, Councilor Angeloni actually had brought in some documentation that had been presented previously, I think it was from, I want to say 2018, 27, somewhere around there, 2019.
Okay.
And we provided it so far to all the land use boards as a refresher.
Yeah.
We're planning on giving it to all the commissions, but we're actually redoing paper copies of it, it's a pretty thick set of documents. We're also going to be in September with the town attorney, doing a training and onboarding session for new members of boards of commissions, so they could sit down and get to learn your left and right limitations, your procedures, your basics.
You know, we, we ran Honeywell over to Coles, or that, you know, there's so many, if you watched on TV, or if you're not here, I mean, it's just, the public's not the enemy, they're our friends, they're our customers, they're our taxpayers. If they get to put an addition on their house, it's more tax income, but they're fought constantly, and there is so much nitpicking, that it turns people off, and they want, they give up, and we can't have that. They are our customer and taxpayer.
I appreciate that, thank you very much, Mr. Potter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, appreciate your thoughts. Okay, we're gonna be moving into an executive session, and right before executive session, we have a quick, three-minute recess to, I'll take a motion to move an executive session, please. Okay, motion.
Please, Mr. Mayor, the motion should indicate that it's to discuss matters concerning security strategy, and/or devices affecting public security, and you should also note who's coming in in addition to this council.
Absolutely, so we're gonna be including the town attorney, deputy chief is going to also, who else we need?
Town manager and assistant town manager.
Town manager, of course. Town manager, of course. I think that's it, right?
Rory.
Oh, assistant town manager, I don't see him there, I'm, sorry Rory, I don't see there. Right, there's a, for those who can't see, there's a column, he's directly behind that column, so I forgot he's here still. All right, and assistant town manager, thank you very much, all right. And again, in consideration to the matters concerning devices affecting public security. So we have a motion by Councilor Plicia, seconded by?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Zampano, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye opposed, stand, we are in recess, and on to executive session. Thank you all.